The air temperature. Sixty-three degrees.
Sixty-three?
Yeah.
I don't even have my house.
No, no, I don't.
My house is.
Well, it's the supply air temperature, but it's it's said at seventy-four.
All right, we'll come to order for the public session of the Franklin School Board meeting for November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at six oh three. Do we have any motions from the non-public?
I make a motion to two minutes of September thirtieth. First session, five thirty-one P M and second session, seven thirty-nine P M and to continue them to be sealed.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Leanne. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Jane and Jack. Thank you. Right, we have our salute to the flag.
For the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the body of which it stands, our nation, our ally, invisible with the thirteen justices.
Thank you. Colleen, we have our required meeting postings.
We did, and we got plastics.
And I did see that, thank you very much. All right, uh, public participation, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none. Move on to agenda item number five, our students, our schools, and tonight we have Paul Smith School students showcasing robotics.
It's us.
All right, so.
This is Haley. I'm Kara. I'm the library media specialist for all three schools this year. Haley's a third grader and an awesome coder.
So, we didn't have any ro- robots at Paul Smith until last year. Um, and kind of looking at how that might happen, um, Kara put out some feelers saying, hey, we want to start a robotics program at Paul Smith. So, when students are at the middle school, they've already got this great background knowledge. Um, so she put out some feelers. Um, Lori, I'll walk you through a few slides of where our donors came from, but we got a lot of Sphero robots. These are perfect robots for K through three and even at the lower middle school level, uh, for learning that that logical sequential thinking. These are STEM s- STEM skills, STEAM skills, um, et cetera. So, I'm gonna show you guys a few things up here and you guys can kind of go back and forth between the actual robotics that's happening on the floor here with with our two. Um, but all K three students, and this year Kinder is is included, um, learn block-based coding. It's a very popular language, um, the robotics basics, and all of them go through STEM or STEAM challenges with throughout this this process. Um, there was two donations of mini Sphero education packs, this is what they look like when they come in. And that's what we were looking for was two of these, um, based on numbers of students that might be coming through the, uh, library maker space at Paul Smith. The first donation we got, Kara and I went, um, and met with Mark Haney. Christine Haney works at Paul Smith School as, um, one of our parents. And Mark Haney's a graduate from Franklin, loves Franklin, loves to support anything that we have going on here. And he said that he's been, um, there, that he works at Freudberg, he's he's the operations manager. And he has been donating robotic materials, et cetera, to La Tronia for years. And just, he's like, we just have had to return our investment. We didn't even get a thank you or hey, here's some of the cool things that we're doing. And we're like, oh, well, well, we can be better than that. So, he's like, I think we got something for you. So, we did a tour of the plant, which was awesome, and then donated two, two of these, um, education packs for us. Simultaneously, Lori Cass is in the background, we don't want to deal, and then she met with, um, Nicole Kate at S M H U, um, community impact program manager, who donated another two. So, we went from zero to four of these education packs, which is a good problem to have. Um, since then, for this year, just so you guys know, two of those are going to the middle school, so we're gonna start with the fourth and fifth grade, as the K through third grade are using these already this year at Paul Smith School. So, uh, the mini sphere is gonna use computer program robotics. Uh, s- the sphere E D U, um, uses common block-based program, and I'll show you what those look like. The current game, or the one of the challenges that's on there that they're they're doing right now is, it starts with this name game, and there's a few variables, and these are the cards that students are given, there's a Q R code in the lower left corner that you can see. Um, students hold that up to their to their Chromebook, it scans it, and it says, oh, you're gonna do the name game today. And there's some step-by-step instructions. Kara, this is Cole, that's her demonstration, kids go and they're off and running. Um, another, this is the next one, this is what you'll see on the floor right now, Archie Ball. And it uses, again, um, there's a point system, and you're aiming your robot. Um, this is Cole.
Some some people that I don't know.
Um, so you're you're looking at directionality, um, the length of time it takes that you want the ball to roll, the speed at which it rolls. You can change color, things like that, but they work on heading, we talked about some of these STEAM skills. You'll look up at that, the first card on the left, in that upper right corner, it says STEAM, and S is highlighted, it says science. So, each of these cards, as students go through these challenges throughout the year, are focused on one aspect of STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, or math. Oops. Um, here's another one to show you, the T for technology, it'll introduce some different variables in this in this activity. Students would, upon impact, so it's an if-then statement, on impact, change the color of your Sphero robot to X, um, and have it, and you do like a spinning little dance move. So, they can have it have if-then statement, so it adds another variable onto the program. Um, so, what they're doing right now, the floor is, this this happened on Friday, these these photos I took. Um, Kara had a class of kindergarteners, and they'd never seen the Spheros, they'd never used them. So, she invited the third graders to come in and partner with the kindergarteners. She made very clear that kindergarteners were to touch the robots at all times, and the third graders were were teachers. They were using their words, they were describing what to do, but the kindergarteners had to walk through and do those things, so they were being empowered. And, um, it was great, the third grade teachers were over the moon, they said they saw behaviors from third graders that they don't normally see. They said, wow, these kids act totally differently in that position of being not just a a an elder, but a peer, somebody who's looking and helping to guide those kindergarteners, some of which were, the photos, the sisters meeting from that third grade. So, that was great. Um, I've got four photos just to kind of walk through, so you guys can see a little more. Oops. Of course, now frozen. Um, I've got, oh, there we go. Um, so this is a little bit more of our students. Um, last spring, the third grade did a concert at the middle school, um, and we had just, um, been doing the coding with the Spheros at Paul Smith, so brought it over as a demonstration, which was, which was pretty fun. And Mark Haney, who was the one from Freudberg who donated, was able to, uh, attend that and see those robots in action. So, I guess it's a great time for you guys to ask me questions about the program, how it's how it's going. This is the second year, so that that started kind of midway through last year. Um, and this year, it's already been introduced, K through three, so kindergarten just has a Friday, last Friday, got their first, got their first days. Uh, but this will happen, um, I think every week on Fridays is the plan right now. Um, it's it's a it's a great time, kids really look forward to it, they're fully engaged. Uh, it does take some prep on the teacher's side, so when Kara's in there, she's got, um, a library assistant in there. Each and every, you've got a pair, every Sphero Chrome, uh, every Sphero to a Chromebook, which just takes a little bit of time. Um, you get you get used to it, but kids get excited, um, and they're learning the basics of robotics, hoping to, um, really ignite that that passion for, um, those STEAM and STEM skills. There you go, you finally got one?
I got one.
Um, does anybody have any questions? And this is a celebration at this point. Um, again, these, uh, two of these packs have gone over to the middle school. Um, Kara's been very busy in the library, creating a maker space in the library at the middle school. If you've been over there, take a look. Um, those transformations have already started, there's two three D printers that are in a back room, books that were overflowing in there, teacher books that teachers weren't accessing, and student books that students weren't accessing, got sent, Kara made, um, gift bags, basically she was the the book fairy, and went to every single classroom in the entire school and said, these books should be in the hands of students, fi- make ma- make that happen. Jewel came over and and Kara and Jewel, um, worked on creating those. Um, so, this is to help articulate the K through twelve robotics program. Um, and at Paul Smith, to our knowledge, I don't think robotics has ever has ever, um, happened there, so, um, this is exciting. Kara?
Does anybody have any questions?
Coming to it better than you are.
It's a very good question, right, just to show what a good teacher I am, right?
So, something that's very exciting district-wide is December ninth through fifteen is, uh, International Hour Day of Code at all three schools. Something that's kind of really fun, uh, and I get to brag about P S S a little bit, is, you know, we get to say it's starting at P S S, and now it's going to the middle. The really neat thing about that is that as these kids grow, they'll be an experience at middle and an experience at high, so there'll be connections all through their school career.
I'm excited for the robotics to be two grade members.
Absolutely. Exactly. Instead of having fourth graders start from scratch, having no exposure whatsoever, they're like, oh, what do we get to program? And they get to look forward because the robot- robotics and robots at the middle school are that next step up. And at the high school, you know, talking about competing and things like that, you know, igniting that passion and and kind of seeing those kids that really click, like, wow, this really makes sense to me, um, is exciting. But thanks for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. All right, on to agenda item number six, recognitions.
Well, staying with that robotics theme, I want to recognize the middle school robotics team, Coach Lily Bacon, volunteer Lori Cass, the middle school robotics team qualified for the state competition. Just very exciting.
Anybody else?
That's why I call out the kids. Most schools have had three months, these kids have three weeks. And not only did they have to program their robot for challenges, they had to actually do the projects as well.
Excellent.
Uh, my guys, Dave Spencer, uh, newspaper on the fifth of November. It was a good article about what he's done for Franklin and where we're going and where we're headed. So, I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to read that article, but, uh, it was a good positive press for for us and the work that he continues to do.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm the one, I'm hometown hero.
All right, on to agenda item seven, Franklin School students' work with Zoe.
Since our previous meeting, students have continued to be extremely active in every subject here at Franklin. And to begin, I'd like to speak about the student council meeting I had, uh, last week. I have been a member of the student council since my sophomore year here at Franklin, and traditionally, the group hasn't been the most popular, consisting of ten students at most, including the five officer positions. However, last Tuesday, a whopping twenty students came to the student council meeting, from all different grades, all different social backgrounds, each contributing to conversation in ways I had never anticipated as co-president. It was remarkable to see. And building on that, the National Honor Society planned a student food drive for the Thanksgiving season earlier this month. All proceeds to be donated to the pantry we have in Franklin. And after we finish tallying everything, the class who produced the most donations will receive a prize for participation, details of which to follow once we reveal the winners. Don't want anybody finding out beforehand. Um, finally, coming soon, the F H S Players production of the Christmas Carol will go up at the middle school stage, featuring students and community performers of all ages. If you would like to support your district, this community, and even some of the people sitting at this table, tickets can be purchased on the Franklin Opera House website. Additionally, as far as theater goes, auditions for the one act after Happily will be held on December tenth and twelfth at the middle school from six to seven, if you know any high school students who might be interested in participating. The show that I'm directing will be performed at the New Hampshire Educational Theater Guild Festival in March, and we'll have a cast strictly of high school students, providing yet another example of student work and participation in our district.
Any questions for Zoe? All right, moving on to agenda item eight, approval of prior board minutes. Uh, we do not have minutes ready for October twenty-first, so we need a motion just to approve the public minutes for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September thirtieth, regular void meeting twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Depp, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Liz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And abstentions? All right, minutes are approved. Agenda item number nine, financial report with business administrator Jefferson Berman.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, I've uploaded the board or the financial reports to the board folder for you all to review. Um, right now, with the numbers on the budget, we are considered, we currently considered over budget by a hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. There's two components to our budget, what we've spent and what we have obligated. What we spent is obviously a certainty, what we have obligated is not a certainty, but potential. So, at this point in the year, we have, are over obligated. And that's the obligated part is what might potentially be spent at the end of the year. Almost every year so far, I've been able to reconcile a bunch of these obligations and reduce that amount of anticipated costs, usually by a few hundred, a thousand dollars. Um, Dan and I regularly discuss the financial situation, and we'd be able to move some expenses and obligations to grants that have eligible activities within those grants, and that's what we're continuing to work on. Um, I think, I don't know if we mentioned this at the lab board, last board meeting, but we have frozen the budget because of this. So, even though money has been obligated, those obligations have to come through us to determine the necessity of those obligations, to whether or not we actually are going to move forward with purchasing things. We also actually been awarded a couple of, uh, grants, uh, in the last month or so, um, primarily the Department of Justice, which has allowed us to actually find some funds within our budget that can be moved into those grants. Um, so the numbers currently don't reflect that as of yet, because we're still working through that process. Um, and part of it, some of those, two of those grants are with the federal government, so we have to work directly with them, they're not through the state, as most of our grants are, go through the Department of Education here in New Hampshire. We're working, two of the grants that we are working with are through the, um, Department of Justice for the federal government. So, um, as I said, some of the numbers do not reflect those monies that we are now able to put into the grants. So, the biggest challenge we are having within our budget is the unanticipated and highly volatile special education department obligations that we find ourselves in. Um, this is a cause of our current financial situation. Since the last board meeting, we had had to recognize an additional hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars in pending special education costs. We are currently six hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars over budget in the special education components of our budget, and that's what is the biggest driver of where we are. These are unanticipated for a number of reasons. The primary driver is students or children moving into the district that require services. Obviously, we don't know that those children are coming until they happen, and our budget development did not obviously, uh, recognize those, because we did, had no idea. A secondary driver is those students that are in the district that are newly identified needing services. Um, as to far as any other issues, that would be something our special ed director could speak to more. But we will continue to attempt to find the best economic methods to fulfill these requirements without sacrificing the quality of services that we provide. As many of you probably are well aware, within our state and our area of the state, we live in an area where there are very few providers that can conform the, uh, services and the quality of services that we need. So, we're very restricted on who we can have, uh, contracted with, with our contracted service providers. So, that's the challenge that we're finding us ourselves in. Um, and the other area of expense that is causing us to be over budget, and this one's a little bit more challenging, is related to homeless transportation. Numerically, if you look at our budget, it shows that we are a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars over budget. It's not a true number, because with homeless transportation, especially if we are working with provider like, um, Lake Region Student Transport, or Mister C's Taxi, a couple of the vendors that we typically work with, we obligate the entire cost of transporting those homeless students, but we actually bill out fifty percent with the other district that is involved with the location of where that child is living, or if the child is living in Franklin and go from another district. That's how that works, by default, this cost for transportations are split in half between the two, um, communities and districts. Um, so, that number is overstated by that. One of the things I've also been able to do is move, um, these homeless transportation into one of our grants that allows homeless transportation as an eligible activity. Uh, so this number does not reflect the movement of those funds also. So, um, even though it says a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over budget, unless some other situations arise from here on out for the rest of the school year, which, again, another volatile situation, homelessness is not something we can predict, that number will diminish significantly as the year plays out and as we start charging other districts for their portion of the costs. Um, so, Dan and I have been talking regularly on this kind of stuff, we're trying to move money around within grants that we have going on. Obviously, the awarding of new grants always helps us, and we're always on the outlook or lookout for other, uh, financial opportunities that might arise. So, we're having constant conversations about those, and we will keep you apprised of any of the changes as we move forward. Uh, a little bit on positive news, hopefully, we are receiving revenue a bit higher than what was budgeted. Um, certainly with our special education aid, which I touched on on last month, we're gonna receive a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, a hundred and forty-five thousand budgeted, so that's thirty-three thousand extra dollars there. Um, our indirect costs that are related to the administration of our grants are, um, at a higher rate than what was budgeted in the budget, so that'll help with additional revenues there. And obviously, with the maintaining of higher interest rates, we are receiving more funds on our, uh, bank accounts, um, for our interest income. So, we're already above, um, that not, it's not reflected in this month's, uh, financial reports, but it will be in the next months that our interest income is higher than budgeted also. And that is where we are at the moment, and we will continue to keep you apprised of how the budget develops, um, for expenditures for the rest of the year, every month as we go forward. Does anybody have any questions on all that fun stuff?
I just wanted to add in that on the special education, um, overages, uh, in speaking with our special ed director at the I two meeting in October, uh, she let us know that as of that point, a little over forty-two percent of our student population currently qualifies for special ed services.
And I want to understand too, special ed services and any I E P or individualized education program that is, um, determined for that student, we are required by law to provide that component that is in those I E Ps. Federal and state laws drive that. And unfortunately, it is a cost that is recognized at the local level. Um, I was, I did myself go to a special education conference for business administrators this past week, and obviously, they're always full of good news too. Um, they said the federal government, when they came out with the I D E A, or Individual Disabilities Education Act, their intent and obligation was to cover forty percent of the costs. They've only managed to cover seventeen percent of it, so. And another example, obviously, at the state level, was that special education aid. Even though I try to budget low and the Department of Revenue always tells us to budget no more than sixty percent of what we think we are entitled to, um, which I do, we still are getting more than what I budgeted. However, if the state had actually paid the full entitlement, we'd have gotten two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, not a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, because the state only budgeted thirty-one million to cover all the costs that are qualified for special education aid. But the total claims that got submitted were fifty-one million dollars, so obviously, you can see where the proration comes from. So, the state, um, also is not fulfilling their full obligation for the cost that we receive. So, that's obviously a big challenge that we have to deal with. The state does hit us in other components of our budget too, in that manner, by not budgeting as much money. Certainly, things like, um, vocational tuition that we pay the tech centers, send them their invoices to the state, and the state says, well, we only have this much money, so this is all we're gonna reimburse you. So, then the other, the VOTEC vocational centers will then go back to the school district, sending school district and tell them, okay, well, the state only paid this portion of your vocational tuition, so you have to pay this balance. For last year for us, it was forty-seven thousand dollars. Prior years, it had been in the mid twenties, but, um, it jumped significantly last year. I don't know if that was necessarily because the state budgeted less or there were more students that attended vocational, um, schools this past year. So, those are obviously the financial situations that we're dealing with constantly. I love being the bearer of good news.
Any questions for Jefferson?
Not for Jefferson, but what did you say, our percentage was?
It was forty-two point three percent as of, um, October.
What date did that?
Uh, just said October, this is, uh, yeah, that was. It was October second when that was reported. And so, I believe that was a September number, actually.
I think. Twice the average, but.
Um, it's significantly above average, I believe, last year, we hit thirty-six percent, and the year before that, we were about thirty percent. Uh, and it is a statewide trend, seeing these increased numbers. Um, but we definitely sit at a disadvantaged point, starting at a higher level, and seeing the the similar percentage increases that are being seen statewide. Uh, and we are also, you know, uh, trying to be on top of this. This is, uh, the special ed, um, services and costs are a standing monthly issue on the, uh, I two committee. Uh, and I suspect we'll start moving this to, uh, the finance committee as well, to to look at these, um, look at the issues, dig in, and and see where we can, um, problem solve, to try to be more efficient in how we how we are providing services, um, and, um, bringing in these service providers that we need, which at this point are are at a premium statewide. Uh, many of them are contracted, and the contracted services cost us, uh, far more than if we could hire people to, um, as full employees, so.
You have the I two segment?
Yes.
What's your next name?
Ew.
December.
December eleventh.
Eleven.
One statistic I also want to add is, even though we've had significant statewide enrollment decline over the last ten to twenty years, um, I think we were well over two hundred and somewhat thousand students. Twenty years ago, we're down to about a hundred and sixty-five thousand students in the state of New Hampshire. Special education students have stayed level or increased during that time. Pure numbers, not percentages too. So, obviously, the percentage of identified students within each district has probably increased, percentage wise.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jefferson. Agenda item ten, committee reports. Uh, Deb.
We had a finance committee meeting on November seventh. We reviewed our minutes for September because we did not have a meeting in October. Treasurer's report was not available, but will be the next meeting. We went over the financial reports, as Jefferson just went over with you. And we reviewed the budget calendar. There's no scheduled changes on that, that was presented. Working on the audit, you reviewed the audit process and the due dates with us. We have a footstep agreement that's going to the city council in December, and they approved the custodial contract in November. We had a policy, DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds, that we were forwarding to the policy committee as a recommended policy. Delaney spoke about the funding resolution update, and we referred that back to the I-2 committee for a language change. And our next meeting was scheduled for December fifth, that has now been changed to December third. Five o'clock here at the SAU office.
Six o'clock.
Um, six o'clock, sorry.
Thank you, Deb. Liz, do you have a committee update?
I do. The policy committee met on November nineteenth, not ninth. And we were able to go through the second half of the fall legislative update. The first part that we did last month is in, all ready for first read for this month, so that process will continue. There are a few that will be a little bit behind because we wanted to do our due diligence. And so, we're sending a couple of the policies out to different interested parties and other committees, just for some insight and additional information before we make decisions, such as finance. And that is pretty much it. And our next meeting is going to be on December tenth at four-thirty here at the district office.
Thank you. Jack, do you have an update?
Unfortunately, I had another meeting that had precedents over the safety meeting, so we need to schedule the, that safety meeting again. Running into a couple of budget timeline meeting deadlines that I have to hit. So, I'll propose a few more to the committee and see where we can land, so we can pass some of these safety policies that are up for acceptance, I guess.
All right, and you? I-2 committee met on November thirteenth. My goodness. What did we do? We reviewed the funding resolution, which will be moving to approve tonight. We did not have Rebecca available, so we moved our special education discussion to next month as well. I reviewed SAS results that we'll see tonight as well. Had a school improvement update from all the schools. Had a class rank plan discussion. We'll see the class rank letter this evening. Talked about the school board goals and, and school board responsibilities. And those will be, so, let's see, discussed this evening under our school board goals update. And we will be having a, so we'll say an ad hoc school board goals subcommittee under I-2 from now until the end of the year, and potentially a new committee for next year for the same. And our next meeting is December eleventh at five o'clock here at the SAU offices. Any questions? Anybody else have committee updates? All right, thank you. Move on to agenda item eleven, new business with Superintendent Legallo.
All right. So, I'd like to nominate tonight Julie Westcott as our district-wide slash middle school climate specialist that is being funded through the federal stop grant that we received.
We have a motion.
I'm making a motion to, uh, through the nomination of Julie Westcott as the new school climate specialist.
Thank you, Liz.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Nomination is accepted.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd also like to move the two administrative contracts that we discussed. And that would be for Dan Clark, our facilities manager, and for Paul Childs, our cap administrator.
So, moved.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Lori. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Contracts are approved.
Thank you very much. I would like to board to accept the resignation tonight of Abby Yelly, Title I math teacher at the Franklin Middle School.
I'm saying no to regret.
Motion by Jane. Seconded by Leanne. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Resignation is accepted with regret.
Thank you very much. All right. Like to nominate our coaches tonight for winter sports season. I'm gonna, I guess, do these separately, so let's do the high school first. So, we're nominating Catherine Robbins as the head varsity girls' basketball coach, Manny Trefethan as assistant varsity girls' basketball coach, David Bedard as the head varsity boys' basketball coach, Dylan Rowan as the assistant varsity boys' basketball coach, Jennifer Shingala as the head varsity indoor track coach, Jamie O'Connell Lacudara as the head coach for Winter Cheer, Ashley Forge for the co-head coach of Winter Cheer, and George Tarwo is the head varsity wrestling coach.
Motion to accept.
Are you looking for the motion to accept? Motion to accept. Nomination accepted.
Thank you, Jack. We'll give Liz the second on that.
Preemptive second.
Any discussion?
I missed the first word, I said, look.
It's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Debut stays. High school coaches are accepted.
Okay. And for the middle school, I'd like to nominate Kathleen Hawkins as the head girls' basketball coach, and Kim Michaels as the head boys' basketball coach.
Point of order, you have a different name on the memo. Nicole Harvey?
Yeah, but it's, that's been changed to Kathleen Hawkins.
All right, sorry.
Moved by Leanne.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Aye, have it.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. In your packet and in the board folder are our spring SAS Student Assessment System results. So, I have those for you. The charts, we went over these at the I-2 meeting. They give you a ten-plus year history of our student assessment scores. The results are mixed. There's some improvement that we have seen, and then obviously, some areas of improvement that need to continue. We are continuing to be identified or be re-identified at the elementary and middle school as the comprehensive schools in need of improvement for our scores. The high school is continuing or being identified once again as a targeted school in need of improvement for the performance of its white students. That's the subgroup that they get identified for. The elementary and middle school designations will come with some funding over the next couple of years that will be used to support their improvement plans, which I've written. As soon as I know how much that funding will be, I will let the board know how we can leverage those funds to help us. If there's any questions about reading, how to read the chart, let me know. You basically can follow a group from left to right, the way we present these scores now. So, what you want to see is those score percentages increasing as we move throughout the years with the same cohort of students. And you can also see how different groups of children have performed over the years by just going vertically up and down and following that along. So, some things to point out to you. The reading scores, so if you look at, um, this year's reading scores, twenty-eight percent of our kids scored proficient or better, as opposed to last year's only four percent. So, clearly, you know, I mean, different group of students, but there's some improvement there. If you look at that same group of kids in math, thirty-five percent of them were proficient in math, as opposed to only ten percent last year. So, those are the types of increases and things we'd like to be seeing. Clearly, there's some places we're seeing that, other places we're not. Another highlight, our grade eleven students in reading were forty-seven percent, which is the highest proficiency that we've seen of any of the grade levels. So, I think that's something to be, to be happy about as well. We will continue implementing the improvement plans at all three schools. We're doing lots of different things to rectify this. Obviously, hiring and retaining quality staff is our number one priority, as has been for a long time, to keep consistent education for our students. And I could take any questions anyone has about any of this that you're looking at. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the fair funding resolution. So, as Delaney was saying, both the finance committee and the I-2 committee have been working on this. I also want to thank Carissa, which put together the two graphical representations that were in your folder. I think these are, in a lot of ways, these actually are embedded in the resolution. If you see these graphical representations, I think one is a great representation of the state inadequately funding education across the state here. And I think this one here talks about the challenges we face here in Franklin as a city with revenue issues, for sure. But we can discuss, I think the goal of the resolution is to hopefully have the board members sign off. What we did last year is I shared it with all the superintendents across the state, as well as, if there's as many boards as we could. We also shared it with the local legislators as well. I think there were like ten or eleven districts that actually passed the resolution after we sent that out to them. Trying to put any kind of pressure we can on legislators and whatnots, to actually make some efforts here in our regard, in that regard. So, we don't know what you want to do in regard to this, but.
I, I think this is a critical year for this. We'll have, you know, all new legislature coming in for a new session. And, and the goal here is to pass this resolution tonight, get this to our newly elected state legislators. We'll have three new legislators, none of whom have, who have been in the House before, and try to, try to get to them before they get fully into the system. I'm gonna personally contact the three of them and try to meet with them to discuss this and to discuss our funding issues here in Franklin as well. Again, like Dan said, you know, we're really trying to build not just momentum for Franklin, but to build statewide momentum, to put pressure on the state legislature to, you know, finally, after thirty-some-odd years of fighting over adequately funding education, to hopefully do something about it. So, if we can get, you know, if we can get a critical mass of communities across the state to pass this resolution and to put pressure on their legislators, hopefully, we can get them to, to create some momentum at the State House. Anybody have any questions on the, on the resolution?
I have some corrections that need to be made. Ruth is a member, just a school board on it.
Okay.
Lori is vice chair, just a member.
Chair. Which one are you referencing?
The funding resolution.
The one that's from ten thirty-one twenty-four, or the one dated eleven twenty-five?
The one that I just printed.
Yeah, it should be the eleven.
They're two and dry.
Yeah, I know, and I, I tried to, they look the same to me, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was like trying to find them, find the difference.
Is there?
There's one difference, look at my name. I fixed it, it's.
Name on the bottom, I, I looked at the content.
No, it's, it was.
No, I was looking at just the bottom names.
Thank you, I'm trying to figure out if we're on the same document.
Yeah, for my name to be spelled, my legal name, not Deb, but Deborah.
She said Deborah on there, I didn't say Deborah.
Well, the coffee I have doesn't, so whether I have the right copy or not, I don't know.
So, Deborah.
Just double check.
Leanne with a capital A. Lori Cass should be.
Ruth, you say school board member.
Vice chair.
So, we're working on our.
But that's just a P D, they've got it, so I made sure they do too, that changed.
Any other corrections besides that?
And you, you got Ruth?
I got Ruth.
Okay.
I got Deborah. I have Lori Cass school board, sorry, school board vice chair, and I have Leanne with a capital A.
Yep.
And what I'm wondering, once the board approves this, which I hope, I'm hoping it'll do in just a moment, I'm hoping what we could do, Colleen, is fix this and have them all sign it before they go home tonight. Because I'd like to move on this as quickly as we can.
I'll make a motion to accept the Franklin school, should I say, school or school district funding resolution?
I'll second.
We can say district, Deb, we'll put district up there.
Any further discussion?
What did you have listed next to the unit?
Deborah Brown. Just my name spelled out, my legal name, not just Deb.
Is it school board treasurer?
Yep, that's what I am.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much.
All right, super. Uh, next up, this, we did receive the Department of Justice stop grant in the amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Uh, it's gonna cover us this year and two, the two following fiscal years, three years in total. Only twenty. Uh, only twenty percent of the fundees were funded, so we were pretty psyched to get this award, for sure. It was our second go around uh at going after this one. Um, some of it is um redundant with the other grant that we just received, but we have met with the grants, the grantees, and they're gonna be flexible with us to allow us to make some shifts. Uh, so we don't have to give a lot of the money back, um which is even greater news for all of us, so we're gonna be able to do that. Mostly within our Department of School Wellness, uh to help fund a lot of that over the next three years now. Including our climate specialists, both here at the high school and the one at the middle school's district wide. So Barbara Slayton uh deserves tons of credit for putting all the time and effort into this and uh bringing this money into our district. Between that and the one we just got, we got over one point two million uh within the last couple of months uh of grant funds, which we all know is so important here in Franklin for us, so. But I need you to accept it first before we celebrate.
Moved by Leanne, seconded by Jane. Any discussion?
What is, what are um some of the things that are gonna, that are in the grant, what is it gonna be used for?
Office of School Wellness, coordinators, uh salary and benefits, climate specialists, salary and benefits in both for the high school and the middle school. Um, potentially our attendance coordinator salary for the next three years. Um, lots of training for teachers, we're paying teachers to receive training. Um, conferences the next three years for the staff to go out and continue to to um get the knowledge that they need. Um, those types of things, Deb.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of accepting the stop grant, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the grant is accepted, thank you, Dan.
Beautiful, thank you. Okay, next up, we wanted to bring the high school class rank proposal to you, the timeline, this, we're not here to approve the actual proposal, we're just here to give you the timeline. Um, so Dave put this together for us, uh this has been gone going through I two for a long time now. Um, he has in there uh the boarded timeline of what we plan on doing before the board makes a decision later on in the year. Hopefully in May, uh he put in the description of what we would like to move towards, uh when we hopefully move away from class rank to move towards the Latin system, so there's some information in there as well. And also there's a sample uh letter to to families as we move through this process. So what we wanted to do tonight is make sure the board's aware that we are embarking on this journey publicly. Uh, and all, I'm not sure we even need a vote on this, I just wanna make sure everybody's aware that we're, this is the path that we're headed down. The board will be able to weigh in on this in May, uh as a whole board, once we ask for approval of this. But this is a good time to ask any questions about the proposal, timeline, or the process, or anything in between. I just wanted to make sure you were fully aware, um, as we start to move forward with this.
And we have been uh talking about this in I two committee for many months now.
A year almost, I think, yeah, almost a year. Like I said, I just wanted to make sure that the board was fully informed of the actions that the administration was taking to move forward. Uh, we'll keep you updated, of course, and obviously in May, that'll be the decision time for the board to decide what they wanna wanna do with this, so. Dave, you wanna add anything? You're good? Okay, the budget calendar that Deb had mentioned in her finance report, uh did go through finance. It has the dates and timelines for our fiscal year twenty-six budget. Um, the budget will go to the board, uh I think it's the first week of March, on the calendar, you can see it in your folder. Uh, and then at that point, once we present to the school board, it becomes a school board's budget. Uh, and you know, at that point, you could have as many meetings or as few meetings as you like to uh to get to where you need to be in terms of what's in the budget and what our what our bottom, uh our bottom line number is and whatnot. Uh, very similar paths uh that we've been taking over the years. Teachers are engaged right when they come back from Thanksgiving and the process in terms of what they need. Uh, administrators work on it uh pretty fervently in January, Jefferson and I go to town with Jewel. The three of us have lots of fun the first couple of weeks of February, for sure. Finance committee jumps in on that as well, and they have a a great time uh getting down to the number that we need to get down to. And then obviously the full board gets involved as well, so very similar processes we've done over the years uh as well, so. Are you sad, Deb, you're not gonna be a part of them, Delaney too?
Look, they're smiling over there.
I have enough of my own moustaches.
I don't know if there's any questions about that, but we'd like to give you the heads up of what it's gonna look like uh over the next, it's like, three or four months, so. Okay, moving on, the next one is Training Day with James McKibb. James needs one more session with the board um before we go out and start to work with the public on the work that we're doing. He is hoping for either Thursday the fifth or Monday the ninth of December. This would be for another six o'clock meeting, probably an hour, hour and a half session. So whichever night we can get the most board members will be the one that we go with. So we're looking at the fifth and the ninth.
Fifth is better for me.
We have one for the fifth and one for the ninth, anybody else wanna weigh in?
Neither is better for me.
I'll keep score, Jack's out no matter what. You can't do the fifth?
I can.
Okay, so two for fifth.
Doesn't matter to me.
Leanne, it's okay, Jane's okay?
I'm pretty sure Liz is leaning strongly towards the ninth, if possible. Is is anybody else unavailable on the ninth besides Jack?
Deb. Deb.
Yeah, I'm not available on the ninth, I have another meeting, you can't do it.
And I I regularly, I I act, I'm regularly sound bad, would've worked that for the next, but.
Alright, we're going with the fifth.
I'll go with the fifth guy's at six. I'll set that up with him tomorrow and let him, let everybody else know that's what we're doing. Alright, so the fifth. Alright, next date we need, the forum with the public for us to talk about all this work that we're doing and what we wanna do. We have two dates to pick from, January fifteenth or January sixteen. That would be a forum at the middle school for six o'clock in the evening.
I guess sixteen.
Do you have a date open?
Oh, beautiful.
Quick bucket. Couple of you won't be on the board anymore at that point, so, 'cause we're not looking at everyone, we're only looking at a few of you there. Look at the smiles on their faces. Maybe they'll be in the crowd. People invite you.
Please, yeah.
Sixteenth, sixteenth for Jack, Lori says sixteen, Leanne, Liz?
Technically six P M.
Six P M, that would be on the sixteenth, alright, so let's go with the sixteenth. That's gonna be at the uh, that's gonna be at the middle school, that's January sixteen.
Is it January or is it?
That's January. January sixteen.
Can you do it two hours long?
That'll be a couple of hours, I think, yeah. Alright, and that is all I have for you tonight, this is for your next item, so take one of these as you get to your next item.
Alright, thank you, Dan.
There's one thing you missed.
No, that's next.
No, it's what's coming now, I asked the same question. Yeah, it's part of the board thing.
It's part of your agenda item, based on your recommendation last month, if you need to be reminded. You get what you want, Jack.
Agenda item number twelve, school board goals update and focus walk schedule.
So who's leading this? So I'll lead this part, Jewel, Jewel was kind enough to go and get this all put together for you. Uh, one of your goals is to do focus walks in the district this year. So Jewel put this calendar together uh with the uh dates, proposed dates of when we would be available to to focus walks with the school board members. We would want to invite teachers to this as well that come along, uh which would be great. Jewel, I don't know if you wanna talk about how you designed this and and any of that, but.
Um, well, I tried to rotate so that if people wanted to attend certain buildings a couple times, you would have various times of the day so that it wasn't the same time for the same school every single focus walk, because you wanna see different things. Um, so I tried to rotate it that way, I obviously had to look at the calendar overall and avoid massive conflicts in all three schools. Um, trying to make sure they were all the same day so that it wasn't inundating on the administration trying to get massive sub-coverage multiple days. Um, so all of those pieces went into play, and then Carissa and I talked a lot about it after I had set up the initial schedule about um giving some sort of focus theme for each block of walks. Um, just because there's so much to look at when you do a focus walk, it can be really overwhelming if you don't have a focus other than just walking around to see what's happening in various classrooms. So, um, for our staff and for any administrators who might wanna do it, or for school board members, we're gonna try to come up with, you know, a focus and, you know, some questions or things you can look for when you're going through these focus walks. Um, and if you don't wanna partake in that, you literally just wanna walk around to experience what's happening, that's fine too. But we are gonna thematically base each of these so that any of our staff that participate have specific things that are all centered around our evaluation plan model. So that's where the four categories came from, the only one I didn't include is professionalism, 'cause it's kinda hard to see in a classroom in their focus walk as far as, you know, are they on time for work and do they show up for meetings? I don't know, you're not gonna see that part from a focus walk. So we focused on the four that you could see, um, when you went into classrooms, or other people could see and learn from when they go into classrooms. That's about it.
Super.
If you want us to email you directly.
Well, we didn't really get to that point, we talked about doing like a Google form signup for people if they wanna do it, and we haven't set that up yet, but we definitely will before January eighth and let everybody know.
Yeah, and we'll be available December four, is that the Wednesday?
Yeah, so I'm gonna go around and speak to all three faculty on December fourth, let them know about this and let them know that they're invited to participate, all that kinda stuff. We're gonna put together some kinda Google form or some kinda Google scheduler, so you can use that. But we will constantly remind you between now and then, at all the different meetings we have, hey, if you wanna do any of these work, we'll get you scheduled and all that, so. There'll be lots of reminders.
Excellent, any other questions? Alright, um, one other item under school board goals, um, is the new board member training. Again, this is gonna be run under the ad hoc subcommittee, uh being led by Lori and Liz. And I have agreed to be a member as well through the end of the year. So, uh, and the more, the more I think about this, the more and more things that come to mind on on, um, I say how long it it took me to understand the role of the school board and the responsibilities and all the rules and all this, so um, we'll try to get as much of that as possible out and and onto paper and and format and whatnot. Um, I'd like to also suggest maybe that we invite at least one new member. Okay, excellent. Yep, yep, perfect, um, do you wanna try to schedule the meeting like, like right now while we're sitting here? Try to, try to get it. Get this one rolling. Second, would would you s- uh.
I got the ninth.
I I have the ninth available as well.
We're not using it for the meeting. Let's go for the trackback, 'cause I'll have ninety-seven.
The two and the ninth, yeah? Alright. Five o'clock?
Every little sound is amplified. I can hear she's speaking.
Alright, uh, we're gonna meet here, S A U? Alright. Thank you. Uh, anything else under school board goals updates?
Uh, I've slipped in the updates from the principals, and I didn't know if there's any other events that are coming up that the board members can attend. Um, then I checked the web's or app as well, and I didn't see any, I did see the request for people to work the concessions, I got that. Um, but I didn't know if there's anything else that we've got coming up that that I may need to schedule for, so. Uh, usually I saw the events that have have happened um on on those reports, but I didn't, if there's holiday concerts and things like that, I just wanna make sure that.
Oh, there's this cool play coming up.
There's, there's a play coming up, I took, I will be in attendance.
You might be in attendance, that would be great, every single night.
So just if if there's a way that we can get those things on the calendar and then we can determine what we'll be a part of, 'cause that's part of our. Yes.
Yeah, we talked about a share, a shared calendar, but I couldn't tell you in what meeting and when that happens and where that is at, so. Yes, please.
And we can talk about that more on December ninth. At the subcommittee, yes.
Do you think all of our events are on the F H S community calendar, I'll get back to that. Or at least our sporting events, we try to put everything on there, we do it twice.
Does that have all school events or?
Just, yeah, I don't know what. I barely can keep track of this place.
Speaking of that side, do you wanna mention, uh, the first home basketball game is gonna be Friday, December sixth, where uh Jim will be used for basketball for the first time. Uh, four thirty is the uh girls' game. Then there'll be a little bit of a, I don't wanna use the word ceremony, but there'll be a little something between the girls' game and the boys' game starts at six. And then the play starts at eight.
To accommodate the coach of the basketball team.
To accommodate the coach of the basketball team, so. So December sixth, if you're interested, you could come to the new gym, see the girls' basketball team play, see some of the boys' game play, and then go to the, to show it.
Yeah. Do all sorts of public.
Get all kinds, there's a lot going on, that's the, that's the tree lighting that night and.
It's the tree lighting, holiday.
Holiday stroll, it's a, it's it's a jam-packed night of fun events in in Franklin, really, it's gonna be pretty cool, so. I'll be inviting the city council out as well next, next week when I meet with them, so.
Dan?
Yes.
Has there been a schedule yet for the grand opening of the, or?
It's not going to be until probably May or June, because the basketball players are in season and not able, so they wanted us to wait to do that, so we'll do that big ribbon cutting with him uh when he's available in the late spring. They did talk about it during the Celtics broadcast, though, when they were playing.
Oh, didn't they?
They talked about him supporting the gymnasiums in Wisconsin, and then they said New England, and we're the only one in New England, so he he was talking about us, which I thought was pretty cool.
We could've get some, some name.
I was hoping it was gonna say Franklin, New Hampshire, is why I was hoping, but that, but they did talk about it on the broadcast, which I thought was the one, he went into the game to play.
Alright, any, any uh last discussion on school board goals? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to item number thirteen, policy, first reads.
Make a motion to approve the first read for B B F student council members, E B C A Crisis Prevention and Emergency Response Plan, E B C H Chemical Safety and Chemical Hygiene Plan, E H Public Access to School District Records, E H Public Access, oops, E H R, sorry, Public Access to District Records Procedures, G B G B A slash J L C E A slash K F. G B G B A slash J L C E A slash K F D Use of Automatic Automated External Defibrillators, I C School Year and School Calendar, I G E Parental Objectives to Specific Course Materials, I H A M Health Education and Exemption from Instruction, I K F High School Graduation Requirements, J J I D Interscholastic Athletic Program, J L C J A Emergency Plan for Sports Related Injuries, and Additional Protocols for Athletics Participation, J L F Reporting Child Abuse and Neglect, I H B B A Limited English Proficiency Instruction.
Thank you, Deb. You have a second? Second by Liz. Any discussion? All in favor, say it. Oh.
Yeah, I know it's just first reads, because some of these, they're, they have a, they have supplemental materials that we need to accompany them, so. So, the plan.
Just for the chemical one, um, the E B C H dash R.
Yeah, that, that's going to the safety committee.
I'm ready for it. Cause the, the original one from the School Board Association referenced the R policy. Um, and there was another one, uh, just for policy committees, uh, alright, well, I guess that's coming my way too, that.
Yep.
And that's the district, uh, Crisis Prevention Emerg.
Guess so.
Okay, received.
Just indeed.
Received, got it, thank you.
That was a good volley.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Policies are accepted for first reads.
Make motion to approve the withdrawal of B G, Board Policy Process, being replaced, was replaced with, what was the other one? B G A or something? A A, B G A.
Thank you, Deb. You have a second? Second by Jane. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And abstentions? Withdrawal is approved. Excuse me. To Agenda Item fourteen, Late or Other. Dan, do you have any late or other items?
I do not have any late items.
Alright, um, would you like to discuss the Delegate Assembly? You had some stuff put into our folder tonight and some takeaway thoughts.
I think I mentioned a little bit in one of our last meetings, um, it was, it was a very interesting presentation. It is in, in the drive, um, from Littleton? No.
I did put it in there.
You did. No, it's like, it's like, it's all.
Oh, it's Jeffrey Rich.
Jeffrey Rich, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, he's the one.
Yeah, over that way. Um, so there, there was some interesting, um, information in their presentation. Um, so if you have a chance, I would recommend taking a look at it. Um, it went pretty smooth, didn't take a lot of time. There were a couple heated items, I guess, um, but pretty much everything went through except for the things that were, were, uh, withdrawn. Um, so it was a pretty eventful day, but it was, it was, it went pretty smooth. Um, so there are s- some additional documents in there for, for everybody to just take a look at it. If you have any questions, just let me know. Um, on late items, I did wanna, I think I had mentioned this to Delaney about trying to use.
Sorry, I wanna, just wanna go back to Delegate Assembly.
Yes.
I had a chance to read the minutes from that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of the discussions and the resolutions that were offered had changed during the course of the meeting. Uh, some that weren't even resolutions, they actually ended up making resolutions, so it was interesting to see how it all unfolded, well, at least in minute form.
Yeah, I guess there was a, there was a couple of things that kinda seemed a little heated. They did remove things, they just said, okay, we're gonna just withdraw this. Um, there were t- there were two, two items that weren't submitted or weren't, um, printed out before the meeting, so I don't know if that's the ones that, that noted that were, because I have to go back and look at these notes, um, the minutes. Um, if it was those that they, that were presented at the end of the meeting that weren't initially on the agenda.
Well, there was some that were on there, but they weren't up for consideration, um, because they were already prior resolutions that were being considered, so it was just like.
Yeah, so.
Their recommendations were to just.
Right, so it was basically.
Adhere to the old ones, and then, and then they decided to actually entertain them, and then change language, and then propose them, and they passed. So the discussions that we had here changed drastically by the time they got to the Delegate Assembly.
And that can happen in any one.
It was very interesting, so, I don't know, I think we need to look at the process, um, as established, because all my boards, not, a lot of the changes or a lot of the things they were in favor of, didn't end up passing Delegate Assembly, so, I don't know.
But that's where your representative would not vote in a way they would abstain, because they don't have the actual full boards, you know, vote on which way they would prefer to go, because they didn't have the language.
Yeah, I just think they'd need to adhere a little bit more to what is presented to all the boards throughout the state, because that's the decisions they're making, you know? So, I don't know, I just thought that was very interesting, so, thank you for representing us, and sorry you had to deal with all of the stuff and.
Thanks.
It was, it was a, it was an interesting, interesting meeting.
Fair.
Um, as far as, uh, late items, I believe I talked to Delaney about possibly looking into mics again, um, because there are some people that can project their voice, but, um, I'm not generally one of them. So, um, I know that, uh, when Ed had come, he had mentioned that he had a hard time hearing us, and I'm sure that that's the case for the recording as well, so that would get something.
And it picks up literally everything. It can pick up that squeaking from your shoes.
Oh, okay. At least that picks it up.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's something we wanna consider talking about or bringing back up.
Everything, what you wanted to hear.
Yeah, true.
So I shouldn't click my pen? That's what I deserve.
Is this gonna be our regular meeting space? Cause it was at Paul Smith for a number of years, and then it was at the middle school for a number of years, and now it's been here. I didn't know what the, the quarterly rotation, the decennial rotation we got. Yeah.
It's up to the board to decide where they wanna meet.
Alright, anything else under Late or Other Items? Thank you, on to Agenda Item fifteen, our second public participation session. I don't see any public in the audience, unless Carissa would like to, no, thank you. Uh, item number sixteen, uh, we have need for a second non-public session, so we'll need a motion. Motion made by Jane, you have a second? Alright, Lori?
Yes.
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 Nineteen, seven nineteen.